Good morning and welcome to the February 4th, 2020, meeting of the Pima County Board of Supervisors. Welcome, everybody, and roll call, please.
Supervisor Bronson?
Here.
Supervisor Christie?
Here.
Supervisor Miller?
Here.
Supervisor Valadez?
Present.
Chairman Elias?
Present and present.
Let the record reflect that all members are present.
Thank you very much. We have Pastor Mark Eisenhower from University City Church here today to offer our invocation, and be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance, to be led by Supervisor Miller this morning. If everybody who's able to would please stand.
All right. Well, immediately, I'm not an expert on public service, but I do want to thank you for the opportunity to be here and thank you for your service to the city. From an outsider's perspective, I think that oftentimes it can be a thankless job, and you probably, at times, get a little more criticism than you do grace, but there's a role, there's a responsibility, a weight that you carry to lead and kind of direct certain things in our city, but thank you for your service. And I just want to pray for this meeting, and ask God to bless each of you and to guide you this morning. So, as you pray with me. Father God, we come to you in the name of Jesus Christ, and we ask for your blessing upon this meeting today. God, we thank you for that you hear us because you love us. We thank you that all the decisions made today matter because we matter to you, God. I thank you for each person on this board, each person in attendance here today, God. I thank you for these board members, for their abilities, the talents you've gifted them with, for their heart and their mind for this city, and for the hard work that they put in. So, help them, God, today, as they come together, to come with a mind of one accord, to selflessly serve those that they represent in these different districts, God. We ask that you would give them humility today to lead them, help them to have character and conviction with the conversation, to also have grace and restraint in these different areas they lead them today, God, help them to hear each other, to have a unity within this team, God, to work cohesively and efficiently for Tucson. God, I thank you for each person that is here today, God, to represent the different matters that come with God, and so lead them, guide them, give them wisdom in the certain as they go through the different areas on their agenda, the different projects they'll come across, God. I pray that this board will again just lead and be the leaders that Tucson needs, to help them to take a page from your book, to kind of lead as Christ led, lead with humility, to love selflessly, and to sacrifice for the betterment of other people, God. And so, guide them, help that your grace just be flowing through the conversation today. We find comfort that nothing is done in vain, God, that you're in control, that you're guiding, that your purpose will prevail, because you are leading this, so, God. So, bless this meeting today, bless each board member, help them to hear again from us, hear again from the people, and to put the knees of this community before their own, God. And again, help them to be able to hear from each other, to serve each other, to listen, to have grace and mercy, just like you've had with us, God. And so, be with them, help them to count every moment today, make it matter, and God, we thank you for each person that's here today, and each person will be affected by the decisions that come out today, God. So, we lift all this up. We thank you so much for loving us, for equipping us, for providing for us, for protecting us, for guiding us, and for saving us through Christ. God, we lift this up in His glorious name. Amen.
Thank you, Pastor. Appreciate you being here. I don't see any changes that have been submitted to the boards. Our agenda will be as it was published. Would like to take a moment, a personal privilege, if it's okay with the board. Just wanted to congratulate the Tohono O'Doam Nation. They had their rodeo and fair this weekend, the parade, and so, that was a big event out there on the reservation. It was very nice, it was warm and beautiful, and Sharon, you know, you were there, and it was great to have you out there as well, it's your district, so, thank you very much. Please.
You know, I was wondering if you would do any of the rodeo stuff, but did you get to the, at least, the chicken scratch piece?
Well, you know, I was gonna kick up a storm doing that, but I decided I better get back to town, so I did.
Did you rodeo it?
No, no, I'm, like, me? Are you kidding me? I, I don't know. I'm one of those softies, I wouldn't even look at anything, you know? I might eat a hamburger, but I'm not gonna be steer wrestling or anything.
You ate a few burrs.
Yes, I did.
Not the, not the, not the animal, but...
I was encouraging everyone along the parade route to eat lots of manutau.
Yep.
That was my advice to them. I don't know if anybody took it, but, and it was a nice event. I just wanted to make sure and mention that. We have pause for pause today, and we have a great puppy that's here, that's named Ramona. No, I'm just kidding, Ramon, but I know, you might want that dog, you know, she's, she's very pretty.
She is. This is Cricket. She is just shy of eight weeks, and she will be available to adopt on the 19th. She is part of a litter that one of our most experienced and amazing fosters is helping us take care of her right now. And I just wanted to take a moment, while we know that she is obviously very wanted, February is National Prevent Unwanted Litters Month, so you can expect us to share on social media about ways you can get some help for low-cost options for spay neuter for your pet if you need help with that. And we also wanted to mention a couple of upcoming events. We still, through the, through February 9th, we have our Find Your Hidden Gem Sale at PAC. Basically, you find a pet that you like, an adult pet, four months and up, and you go through our treasure chest. In honor of the gem show, you pick out a gem color, and different colors represent different savings. You can get from $5 off to a free adoption. And all you have to do is play in the treasure chest. And then, on Monday, the 10th, we are having our In the Doghouse with Michelle Figaroa. So, In the Doghouse with Fig, one of our staffers is going to be spending the night with one of our dogs for a week, well, just shy of a week, from Monday to Friday, and the hope is to get her adopted before Valentine's Day, so, please come out and adopt, help us get all these cats and dogs homes. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Bryant Smith, are you in the audience? Yes, Bryant. Do you, you submitted a card. Do you want to speak a call to the audience, or do you want to speak during the, the hearing? Okay. I just wanted to make that sure, because I wasn't clear from your card what your intent was. Okay, we're going to move to call to the audience now, and it's been a fairly contentious time with call to the audience over the last year, year and a half, and we've had instances where people have been vulgar and used ugly racial epithets, and call out from their seat and yell and scream when they're not recognized to speak at the podium. So, if you do any of those things, you're going to be asked to leave, and it's unfortunate, but that's what we have to do. And so, I want to make clear to everybody that those are the rules. When you are called up, you have three minutes to address the board, but again, try not to be vulgar, well, don't be vulgar, that's a better way of saying it, and be thoughtful of others, and they'll respect your opinion, hopefully, in return. Our first speaker today is going to be Jerry Otoboni. Ms. Otoboni, please come forward. Thank you for being here. You have three minutes to address the Board of Supervisors after giving us your name for the record.
Good morning, Supervisor Elias and Board of Supervisors. My name is Jerry Otoboni, and I live in Oral Valley. Well, again, on the radio. Garrett stated that Huckleberry made another one of his foolish taxpayer mistakes, besides the bowling alley, telling, trying to get Stone Garden to pay for the holding facility and housing of migrants from other countries which Stone Garden stated was not legal. Now, the facility is not needed, and empty, and it is pitiful and shocking that all those veterans, all over, of all ethnic backgrounds, on the street and homeless, who went to war to protect you and your lifestyle, and you treat them with such disdain. The facility could house them. Then you have families that Mr. Huckleberry taxed them out of their homes. Despicable. They too could use the facility. You three, Bronson, Valadez, and Elias, say that they're for the poor? No. What a farce. You three, instead, have helping these people just continue to raise Mr. Huckleberry's wages, time and time again. Despicable. How do you instead, you do, you do, instead of housing people who deserve this facility, instead provide it to people from foreign countries who no longer need the facility? Shame, shame on you. Thank you.
Very well. Thank you for being here. Our next speaker's gonna be David Eppiheimer. Please come forward, sir. Thank you for being here. You have three minutes to address the Board of Supervisors after giving us your name for the record.
Thank you, Chairman. I am David Eppiheimer, the Chair of the Pima County Republican Party. I'm here to speak in favor of accepting the 2018 Stone Garden Grant and getting on with it. It's a matter of public safety. There have been stipulations made, I believe, in memo from Administrator Huckleberry and Sheriff Napier, that have addressed the issues before this board, and I will simply urge the board, all members of the board, to accept the 2018 grant and get on with the serious public safety business of Pima County. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker's gonna be Bets Putnam-Hidalgo. Bets, please come forward. Thank you for being here again. Please give us your name for the record, and you have three minutes to address the Board of Supervisors.
Good morning. My name is Bets Putnam-Hidalgo, and my message is much shorter than three minutes today. I urge you to vote no on Stone Garden funds, as I have before, and for two reasons. One, which I think is the most important, is who are we talking about when we talk about public safety? Because there's a significant part of our community that does not feel safer having the sheriff authorized to act as Border Patrol. And so, it's a little offensive to me that we talk about public safety as if all of those people, which constitute a little more than 60% in District 3 of Pima County, when they probably do not feel safer knowing that they can be stopped for no reason, that they can be profiled, et cetera. And then, the second reason is, as we're watching in the, at the, at the federal level, it's not hard for boards like this, or for senators, to basically erase the meaning of their own existence. You all took a vote, you said in that vote that you would accept these funds if they were tied to humanitarian aid. When you go back on that, people ask themselves, what do we have a Board of Supervisors for, then? They voted for one thing, and then they voted against it. So, I urge you to vote to not mess with Stone Garden funds now or in the future, because they're a nightmare for a large portion of our community, and they make you, yourselves, kind of look ineffective. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Bets. Appreciate you spending your time here with us. Our next speaker's gonna be Raquel Barrinow. Raquel, thank you for being here and being patient today. One more time. Please give us your name for the record, and you have three minutes to address the board.
Hi, my name is Raquel Barrinow. I live at 819 East Lee Street, and this has to do with this abandonment that I've been applying for, and I finally filed a lawsuit which is on the agenda today, and I'd like that to be transparent. Why don't we have the meeting out here instead of behind closed doors? You know, this, this land was taken from my lot years ago, and the county won't give it back. And the reason they won't give it back is because my neighbor is opposed to it, you know? We don't even know why she's opposed. So, where's the justice here? You took land from my lot, you won't give it back, you don't need it, and, and we don't even know why my neighbor's opposed. It could be an illegal reason. Let's, you know, you aren't, it's not me against you, it's us to try to get justice, and I don't see any justice here. I mean, this is ridiculous. You guys took land from me, and you won't give it back, and we don't even know why my neighbor's opposed. It could be an illegal reason. She could be discriminatory. You know, she might not like me for some reason. That's not a reason to deny me the use of my land. Up in Maricopa County, and you can verify this, call them up, I've told you this several times, they, when they do the abandonments up there, if somebody's opposed, they ask her what the problem is. You know, maybe we can resolve it. Isn't that the logical thing to do? This is mean to make me go to court about this. You guys should take a stand and ask her what her problem is, and if she doesn't want me building there, she should buy my lot. That's the just and fair thing to do. So, it's not me against you, it's us to get justice. And the first thing I'm gonna do is I'm gonna summons that woman for a deposition and find out what her problem is. And, you know, like I said, if, if she doesn't want me to build there, she should, she should buy my lot. Thank you, God bless you. Let's have a transparent meeting right here in front of everybody. Thank you.
Thank you, Raquel. Our next speaker's going to be Matt McGuire. Mr. McGuire, thank you for being here and being patient. Please give us your name for the record, and you have three minutes to address the Board of Supervisors, sir.
Hi, good morning. My name is Matt McGuire. I'm here to speak in support of the Stone Garden funding this morning. I want to thank the board for your service. I also would like to thank the Pima County Sheriff's Department for what they do as well. I've resided in Pima County since October 2007, when I was brought here with the Air Force, and I've resided here since then, minus a three-year absence because of an Air Force move, and I have decided last year to retire here after 21 years of service, so my family and I have retired in Pima County. I just want to remind the board, your all's primary concern regarding this money is the safety and security of the citizens of Pima County. You do what no other group can do. We put you in place to make laws to protect us. I believe that the Sheriff's Department has adequately and in detail addressed any concerns about funding and pension requirements that were brought up. I find that argument a little bit disingenuous in the first place, considering the board two years ago in a split decision voted a salary and financial benefits package of approximately $326,000 per year for our county administrator, which incidentally is about $100,000 more per year than the Vice President of the United States makes. It's only slightly less than the combined salary of both of our U.S. senators, and it's about six times the starting salary of a deputy sheriff. Nevertheless, regardless of your political affiliation, your view of the current, the previous, or future presidential administration, I believe it is your duty to take this money. A very practical situation where this applies, since the money is fungible, it will free up money to do other things, like fund their rescue helicopter. Pima County has one rescue helicopter and one pilot, so you have 40 hours of aerial rescue coverage per week in this county, which is mountainous and in desert terrain. When that pilot is off duty, when he's on vacation, or when he's sick, that aircraft does not fly. That is a public safety concern, not only for our citizens, but for anybody visiting this county, and for that matter, for anybody crossing the border, trying to walk through the desert illegally. That is a life-saving asset that we need to have ready to go. So, we need to understand the reality that we live in a county that borders another country, and our law enforcement agency is necessarily gonna be involved in those operations. It is their job to do that, and it is your job to provide them the tools to do so. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much. Our next speaker's gonna be Amara Pacheco. Amara, thank you for being here, and I appreciate your time and your patience. Please give us your name for the record, and you'll have three minutes to address the Board of Supervisors.
Good morning. My name is Amara Pacheco. I'm a community organizer with La Coalición de Derechos Humanos. I'm here to oppose Stone Garden funds. I didn't write anything because I feel that, we all know, we all know where we stand, we all know where these funds are going, and it's not to protect citizens. These funds are not just going to protect this. Funds are going to target a certain community. You all know that. You all know that. Last year, the funds were accepted. Here we are again, and we need to make the right decision. We need to, you all need to make the right decision, vote right on this. Do not accept those funds. There's nothing that I can stand here and say and teach you or educate you on, because you all know. These funds are hurting our community, and they're gonna continue doing that. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker is going to be Andrew, Andrew Gulo. Thank you for being here, sir. Please give us your name for the record, and you have three minutes to address the Board of Supervisors.
My name is Andrew Gulo. I have a BA degree in government from Texas Christian University, a master's in public administration from Southern Methodist University. I'm an ex-army infantry officer, and I've had 35-plus years in human resources management, but most importantly, I am a resident of District 3, Diamond Bell Ranch, Three Points. Last year, the county approved Stone Garden, but asked for $200,000 for the migrant center. What was the motive for that? Was it, was it to help county taxpayers? If it was, I applaud your effort. Or was it a stipulation inserted as a poison pill, knowing that it would be rejected in order to revote on Stone Garden, using rejection of the migrant center funding, funding as justification for the vote for no on Stone Garden? That would be a mistake, one the city of Tucson just made when they put politics above pragmatism. The mayor mentioned the Trump administration and also wanting to have Tucson remain a city welcoming to all regarding of the status or background. I guess criminals are now welcome in Tucson. As reasons for this rejection, this was done over the opposition from its own patrol officers, who said the grant enabled them to get countless drugs and guns off the streets of Tucson. The migrant center and county stone grant, Stone Garden grant are two separate issues. The migrant center will be funded if Stone Garden is accepted. The migrant center will be funded if Stone Garden is rejected. Again, two separate issues. The only real issue to be considered is whether the board wants to listen to noise from individuals who do not live in District 3 and somehow feel unsafe, because if the grant is approved, it allows sheriff's deputies to apprehend drug smugglers, human traffickers, and other cross-border criminals in the border region, while at times providing medical assistance and saving the lives of migrants in medical distress as they perform their duties. Or, the board can listen to the voters of District 3, whose safety is actually threatened if the grant is rejected. Therefore, I'm asking the board to approve the Stone Garden Grant, which addresses a real threat to voters and residents of District 3, and not reject it to appease those individuals who in their own minds do not feel safe because of a perceived threat. There are puppies up for adoption. Do not sacrifice the safety and security of the residents and voters in District 3 on the altar of political correctness. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much, sir. Appreciate you being here. Our next speaker's going to be Ryan Kelly. Mr. Kelly, if you'd please come forward, and I think you know the routine. You have to say your name for the record, and you have three minutes to address the Board of Supervisors.
See if I remember.
Appreciate your patience, Ryan.
Thanks. And thanks for coming out, both of you, this weekend to the sales rodeo and parade.
That's fine.
I ate way too much food. So, my name is Ryan Kelly, and I'm a resident in Supervisor District 1. Two years ago, this board began something in a moment that I perceived as genuine conscious. You paused. You said that maybe this grant you've been accepting for years is a bad thing, and a diverse coalition from communities across our county was here to back you up. We never left. Every time Operation Stone Garden reaches your agenda, county residents have decisively said no. Whether it was, you know, the formation of the CLEPC, which was good in concept, but was persistently attacked until it was abolished and dismantled, much to this community's dismay, where many people who had the opportunity for oversight lost their voice. It was taken from them by this board. And the transparency of direct impact on our residents with hard data readily available to the public, as such, has been cast aside. Whether it was Sheriff Napier working behind the scenes with Mark Fincham, working to subvert the constitutional authority of you all here to oversee the acceptance of federal grants, and just let the sheriff do that without you having any say, without us having any say. We were here. We were here to say no and to back you up. When the decisions have been hard, community activists, immigrants, and indigenous rights groups, organized labor, have all voiced our opposition. The county Democratic Party has passed resolutions of opposition twice to back you up. The county Green Party, even the Libertarian Party, has opposed Operation Stone Garden. This community has decided two years should prove that to you, and we're not going away. 75 people await streamlined trial this morning to be detained for profit, or worse reported. How many came by way of local law enforcement bribed to function as immigration agents? How many? How many undocumented community members have been ensnared in this system as we waffle? How many is too many to you? Politics over pragmatism, I just heard. Well, I, and I think a lot of the community members here today, live to see and build a world where oppression is not pragmatic, where the threat of deportation is not political football. It's just wrong. And when you say no to Operation Stone Garden, this community will be here to back you up, and when, if you do not, we will be here to hold your feet to that fire forever. Say no.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly. Our next speaker's gonna be Amanda Camiao. Did I get that wrong, Amanda? I'm sorry.
That's okay.
If you'd please come forward and give us your name for the record. Thank you for being patient and being here.
No problem.
And three minutes to address the Board of Supervisors.
Great, thank you. My name is Amanda Camo, and I want to first start off by saying good morning, Chairman of the Board, fellow supervisors, and County Administrator Chuck Huckleberry. My name is Amanda Camo, and I am the local territory manager for Patterson Veterinary Supply, and I'm here to introduce myself in regards to Agenda Item Procurement Award First, a little bit about myself. I am a Tucson native, born and raised. I did attend the University of Arizona, where I received my Bachelor of Science degree in veterinary sciences and chemistry, and my Master's of Science degree in animal sciences. I also have interned at the Reed Park Zoo and volunteered many years at the Arizona Sonora Desert Museum. I'm an avid animal lover and have many rescue animals of my own, ranging from a hedgehog and dogs to goats and horses. Helping animals has been my life's mission, ever since I was a kid. As a former veterinary technician, I have been fortunate to help the lives of many animals, and now I help them by assisting our local veterinarians with life-saving medicines, equipment, and training provided by the company I represent, which is Patterson Veterinary. Patterson Veterinary serves as a small business, but is a leading distributor of supplies, equipment, technology, vaccines, and pharmaceuticals. With over 30,000 products from the leading names in veterinary medicine, Patterson supplies companion pet, equine, and mixed practice clinics. Patterson Veterinary draws from an enormous pool of resources to provide expanded services, products, technologies, and distribution capabilities. This includes a continual influx of new technology and product and equipment offerings, as well as innovative business solutions to improve efficiency and productivity in veterinary facilities. Patterson has become a leader in the marketplace by providing superior value for the customer. This reputation for excellence also results from business conduct guided by a core set of values and the belief that how we conduct our business directly affects the operation, efficiency, profitability, and reputation of our company. As an employee of Patterson Veterinary, I hold tightly to our core values. As an employee of Patterson Veterinary, I hold tightly to our core values of partnership, integrity, and innovation, and incorporate these principles into my job daily. I work closely with our local veterinary community and go the extra mile to provide a true personal customer service experience. Furthermore, since I am local, it gives our customers the advantage of having their Patterson representative right in their backyard wherever assistance is needed. This community is important to me. It matters to me, and I care about the people and the pets and animals in it. Thank you for your time, and I look forward to working with you in assisting our hometown's animal care center.
Thank you very much. Appreciate your time, and I apologize for that rather rude interruption of your comments with somebody's cellphone. Please turn them off. Please silence them. It's just the right thing to do in a group setting, especially when we're trying to show respect for each other as we talk about the issues that are important to us. Our next speaker is going to be Jerry Bastian. Did I get that right, Jerry?
Yeah.
Thank you. Please come forward and give us your name for the record. You have three minutes to...
Yeah, I'm sorry. That was my cellphone. I'm sorry.
That's okay. I understand.
Okay. My name is Jerry Bastian. Good morning. And I'm a member of the Green Party of Pima County. We're the only party in Tucson that supported... unequivocally supported Proposition 205. And last time we discussed Stone Garden, I asked the Board of Supervisors, which side of history will you stand on? And I think that is still a question. The administration's lawless and abusive lack of concern for immigrants, families, and their children, whether they were documented or not, has increased despite public outcry. Okay. It's not a matter of funding these abusive laws or passing local laws to protect our community from racist government abuse as Proposition 205 would have. Tucson has... Okay. Tucson has been the target of authoritarian law enforcement agency abuse because of our large, established immigrant community, our welcoming tradition, our deep family business and social ties to Mexico, and our proud tradition of fighting back against government racist... racism and abuse of our immigrant community. As we have done when 20,000 Tucsonians marched against the despicable SB 1070, as when we passed city sanctuary resolutions, and when 18,000 Tucsonians signed petitions to put sanctuary on the city ballot. We were especially targeted in 2019 as our supervisors pushed back against Operation Stone Garden, and their city dared hold an all-out campaign to establish a legal sanctuary city with a massive grassroots campaign. Such a loss for the authoritarian law enforcement and the racist authoritarian Trump administration could not be tolerated, and the wealthy 1% patrons of the administration poured half a million dollars against the community's approximately $30,000 and defeated a people's proposition and used thoroughly debunked lies embraced by Republican talking points, delivered on TV commercials with such shameless hysteria it would have made the virgin blush. Which side of history will each of you... beyond, I ask you, which side of history? The side of our diverse...
Sir, you're out of time. I'm sorry. Please complete very quickly. Very quickly, yes.
Yes, it's a small question. The side of our diverse, hard-working, peaceful community or, as you know, the cruel, lawless, brutal, racist agencies of the violent authoritarian regime?
Thank you. Appreciate your time, sir. Our next speaker is going to be Cora Bissell. Thank you for being here, Ms. Bissell. Appreciate your time, your patience. Give us your name, please, and you have three minutes to address the Board of Supervisors.
Okay. My name is Cara Bissell. I reside in District 4. I am here to praise the separation of branches in our government that our country was founded on, and I think here in Tucson and in the county, to a degree, we have maintained that separation with notable exceptions when the very entity that is going to benefit from Stone Garden is here arguing for it by... they're getting paid if it passes. That alone should raise red flags. When the executive and legislative are cooperating in such a way that there are no difference and there's no checks and balances, it has to be looked at, and you have to be aware, we're not following the system of government that we were founded on. When we receive military equipment that is designed for foreign wars, it is a travesty to our civilian lifestyles that we've always had. That's basically it.
Thank you very much for spending your time here. Appreciate it. Okay. Our next speaker is going to be Zaida Olivier. Zaida, please come forward. Thank you for being here. Appreciate your time and your patience. If you could please give us your name for the record, and you have three minutes to address the Board of Supervisors.
Hi, my name is Zaida Olivier. I'm here with People's Defense Initiative. First, Chair, I wanted to thank you for your support of migrant rights and also the sanctuary initiative. You're one of the only people in office who actually took a moral position, and you actually took the right moral position on this issue, so thank you very much for that. I wanted today to talk to Sharon Bronson. I am actually in your ward. I'm sorry. You understand what I mean. I've been here so many hours. I almost have PTSD from being here, to be honest with you. As many of my friends who are here, how many times do we have to have the same discussion? And it pains me that I worked with you very closely, Sharon, to build that commission that I spent tireless hours on. Under your supervision, under your promises, you had... you told us that you were on a certain side of this issue, and we fought together for it, and you strung us along. And then, when that switched and you had an out with humanitarian aid, you flipped your vote, and you threw us all under the bus. You threw me under the bus, and you asked me to resign from my position so that the commission would not be a workable commission. And that pains me as a community member and as a person that, like you, works to make this place a better place for everyone. So, we know about the data. We know about the broken promises. We know that we can't use those funds for humanitarian aid like we were so promised. So, what are we even doing here again? The question again is to take a moral stance on this and say no. And even that question is so out of the window at this point because the data shows that it's a failing program. And as a matter of fact, I'd actually like to read something directly from Chief Magnus, which is the first that I'll ever quote that guy. But I'd like to tell you a little bit about why he decided that he's going to stop taking it. One of the points, he said in an email that he sent to the mayor and council, "The current polarized political climate surrounding immigration issues has made the department's acceptance of Operation Stone Garden funding a source of criticism and mistrust. During the years that TPD accepted Operation Stone Garden funding, the department appropriately managed the nature and level of cooperation with CBP to avoid civil immigration enforcement, and this is key." He says then, "This approach is no longer remains tenable." And this is the promise that we've been made by the sheriff back there, that they don't do this. This is... one of his counterparts saying, "That is no longer tenable," and that's something that we've been arguing here for a very long time. So, do the right thing, Sharon Bronson, and vote no on this. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate you being here. Our next speaker is going to be Steve Valencia. Steve, please come forward, and you have three minutes to address the Board of Supervisors, and you have to give us your name for the record.
Thank you so much, Steve Valencia. Good morning, everybody. I don't have prepared statements. However, I just turned 70 years old, and through my 70 years, you know, we've been dealing with the same problem of racism. And I got to tell you that during the... in the '30s, my mother's family was deported. They were deported during the '30s because they thought that the... you know, Mexicanos were the reason for the economic collapse of the country. They were sent back to... they went back to Mexico, and the trouble is when they... a couple of years later, they tried to come back. They couldn't do it because my mother and the three other sisters were actually born at home, and they had no papers. They had no birth certificates, so they wouldn't let them in. So, they were citizens of this country, and they wound up coming back through the hills. Now, those things right there are deeply embedded in my mind. Now, my father was an old, you know, mine mill and smelter worker guy, and he taught me about the exploitation. And I tell you what, all through my years as a worker, I worked alongside of a lot of inmigrantes, and they worked their... they worked very hard. But when the production is done and there's no more houses to build and there's no more, you know, whatever it is that they're producing is over, they deport them. They're disposable. The exploitation is very deeper for the immigrant workers. And I'm here to say that this Stone Garden, it's all part of the demonization. It's part of the... it's part of the attitude they want people to have about Mexicanos and other immigrants. They're branded. It's a branded people, a targeted population, and it's because of the exploitation that occurs on the job. They don't want immigrants to have any rights. They want them to be disenfranchised and have walls separating, and it is a wrong thing to do. Stone Garden is part of the ideology that protects the profits of the rich. I'll tell you that. That's all they're doing is protecting the right that they have to exploit labor. And, you know, I've been around for 70 years. Just had a birthday the other day, and I thought all this was over. I swear to God, I thought this was... I thought the Stone Garden thing was dead, but it's not because the racism is not dead. The exploitation of immigrants is not dead, and they continue to be a branded workforce in our country. And it's an international problem that was caused by capital, and I think that everybody in here probably agrees that these people were forced to migrate to here. And, you know, when the chickens come home to roost, then they build walls. But it's the reason it's international capital that has actually produced all this... I see the red light. Thank you so much.
Happy birthday, my brother. Appreciate it. Thank you for coming here. Our next speaker is going to be Cameron Jones. Thank you for being here, Mr. Jones, and your patience is appreciated as well. Please give us your name for the record, and you have three minutes to address the Board of Supervisors.
Thanks. My name's Cameron Jones. I'm a lifelong resident of Southern Arizona, born and raised, 33 years old, and just in my lifetime, there has been a drastic shift has occurred with Border Patrol creeping into more and more areas of our public and private lives. Border Patrol and other law enforcement agencies that take federal dollars with strings attached are accountable not to us here who live and work among them and who pay their salaries in the case of the Pima County Sheriff's Department, but rather, they are accountable to faraway places and people who do not know us, do not know our priorities, do not know our hopes and dreams and fears, or the kind of community and region we want to live in. This creep of militarized, federalized policing immigration enforcement into and onto our part of the world has had many negative consequences. My grandparents, aunt, uncle, and cousin live in Patagonia. It is beautiful there, and their house is where we... where our extended family gathers for Thanksgiving, Christmas, and Easter. But pretty much every year, it has gotten less fun to go down there. That is not a criticism of my family. It is a criticism of the Border Patrol checkpoint on State Route 83 that we have to pass through coming and going. It is a criticism of the Border Patrol substation in Sonoyta with hundreds of shiny new trucks, ATVs, and other toys just sitting in the sun depreciating, while our schools use old buses and our Forest Service has to make do with much less. I don't like feeling watched, policed while driving the beautiful back roads or being stopped on a hike and asked what I'm up to, where I'm going, and being told it is not safe to be out in the places I love. I think to myself that I didn't have any problems out here until you showed up from who knows where with a gun and started imposing yourself on my life and my business. And my family... and my family is pale-skinned with light eyes. I know we have it easier than most in these involuntary, sometimes daily, interactions. At the checkpoints, they usually don't give us a second look unless we have... unless we dare to show in our faces our displeasure with the whole charade. Then they sometimes decide to put us back in our place. But our last name is Jones, and our car is nice and relatively new, but not too nice or too new. If our last name was Garcia, I can imagine these checkpoints would be more than a nuisance to the point where it may not be worth it to go down anymore, no matter how beautiful the countryside or how fun the family gathering. That then is the point I want to make. Disencroachment has made us less free to move around in our own communities in Pima County and nearby counties. It has made it less fun for some of us and inadvisable or impossible for others to hit the open road. We may not be able to push out the federal officers, at least not in this body on this day, but we can refuse their money and reject the deputizing of our deputies as federal immigration cops. Follow the money, and you know whose bidding they are doing. We, as a community, should be able to set the priorities for our safety and security while respecting the civil liberties and autonomy of everyone who lives here, not just the Joneses... I'm finishing. I just have a couple...
Okay, thank you.
Not just the Joneses with their pale skin and nice but not too nice car. They say you can judge someone by the company they keep, but you've heard how BP and ICE treat people. We should all stay away from them and their blood money, especially the Pima County Sheriff's Department, who is supposed to work for us and not them.
Thank you. Thank you. Appreciate your time. Our next speaker is going to be Anna O'Leary. Dr. O'Leary, thank you for being here with us today. Certainly nice to see you here. You have three minutes to address the Board of Supervisors, but please give us your name for the record.
My name is Anna Ochoa O'Leary. I am a longtime resident of Tucson, Arizona, and I currently work at the University of Arizona. But I'm coming here to emphasize and urge you to vote no on the additional funding for Stone Garden. As you know, you know, enforcement does not just impact those targeted for enforcement such as undocumented immigrants. Other people are affected as well. Families of those undocumented immigrants, many of whom are U.S. citizen family members, are also impacted. They're impacted because they fear the loss of a job if somebody gets picked up and deported. We have children among those... within those families that also are affected. As part of my job, I do a lot of research on the immigration enforcement issues, including the long-term stress and all their psychological impact of increased policing on families. And again, I cannot emphasize enough that non-immigrant family members are also included, and I have to emphasize that even non-family members are included, such as distant relatives, neighbors, coworkers, friends of undocumented immigrants, schoolchildren, teachers, anybody who has any type of connection with the immigrant communities in our area. These are people that we normally hire, that we work with, that we sympathize, and that we ourselves are also stressed out because of what we see with increased enforcement in our neighborhoods. We have research that shows that, you know, with increased policing and money for policing, non-immigrant families and neighbors and friends are also affected because we are profiled as part of the generalized population that fit a profile, such as not speaking English proficiently, having an accent, being brown-looking, working class, getting up at 2:00 in the morning to work, being mistaken for somebody who's been out partying and pulled over by police and taken into jail and losing a job as a consequence. So, I urge you to vote no. I urge you... I urge you to do the right thing. I think a problem has been created politically. And the only economic solution is not to throw more money with more policing, but also, but to let people work, earn a living, contribute to our society, contribute to the economy as they want to, instead of increase, throwing more money at more policing to create even more problems when a problem did not exist. If we just choose to let people live and work and put their lives together to be able to support their family. So I thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Our next speaker is going to be Alba Jaramillo. Could you please come forward, Alba? Alba, appreciate you being here. And you have three minutes to address the board, but please give us your name for the record.
I am Alba Jaramillo. And Supervisor Sharon Bronson, I live in your district. I am a border in your district. I urge you and the rest of the supervisors here to please vote no on this policy. I've shared my story in the community many times. I grew up undocumented in this community. I personally know what it's like to not trust law enforcement and not to call law enforcement. These experiences have motivated me to work on behalf of immigrants and to dedicate my career on, on the defense of immigrants. I want to share a story with you about a woman I work with. I have long worked with immigrant victims of domestic and sexual violence. This woman I was helping, trying to get out of a domestic violence relationship, her husband was a U.S. citizen who, who abused her for many years. On one occasion, she went to a community event. When she came home that evening, her husband slit her throat. She almost bled to death. Thankfully, she was able to escape. In her apartment community, she went door to door knocking because she didn't have a cellphone, she wanted to call 911. Four of the residents whose doors she knocked at did not call the police. And they did not call the police because they were undocumented. Thankfully, someone did finally call the police, but she almost bled to death. So when we're thinking about this issue, and, and it is not about demonizing law enforcement, but it is about keeping our communities safe. The reality is that immigrants do not trust law enforcement and for good reasons. But they're not going to trust law enforcement. Many times, as every time this issue comes up, I try to convince some of my immigrant community members to come and speak and share their experiences. But they don't. And they don't because they actually believe that the sheriffs is here at the, at the entrance of this county building because they're part of the county. So you are not hearing their voices, you're hearing the voices of the advocates. And so if they're not going to trust law enforcement, and they also believe that you're placing sheriffs here in this building, then there's no trust. Please, as Board of Supervisors, try to gain some of that trust of, because they're also community members and this also includes mixed-status families. Thank you.
Thank you, Alba. Our next speaker is going to be Steve Diamond. Steve, please come forward. Give us your name for the record. You have three minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Steve Diamond. I am the Democratic candidate for Supervisor in District 4. I oppose the Stone Garden grants because they compel our deputies to act against the best interests of our county and of our community. Some supporters have said that the grants are needed to solve problems caused by federal policies, failed federal policies like immigration and the war on drugs. Then they say that because the county has no influence over federal policies, we ought not to interfere in whatever the feds want to do. Nonsense. That takes a true premise and reaches an absurd conclusion. If the problems result from federal policies, why would we imagine that renting our deputies to the feds to implement those same policies is going to solve anything? Wouldn't that be like, oh, I don't know, putting a climate change denier in charge of the EPA? It makes no sense. No. We need local solutions funded and controlled locally. Otherwise, we are denying our responsibility to our constituents. Recently, one of you appeared on an internet podcast and scoffed at the notion that my ideas could possibly represent his predominantly and historically Republican district. Well, I have news that may come as a shock. All of you, these are your constituents. Each one of you is responsible not only to the majority voters of your district, but to all of Pima County. You are responsible not only to the landowners, but to the homeless. You are responsible not only to the wealthy, but to the destitute. You are responsible not only to the privileged, but to the incarcerated. You are responsible not only to the citizens, but to the undocumented immigrants. And you are responsible to the descendants of those who came before, the indigenous nations whose land our ancestors colonized. So, here's what you do. You embrace your responsibilities. You take that Stone Garden grant, you take that attempt by the feds to bribe you into handing your responsibilities over to them. You take that and you send it back to Washington. And along with it, you send a note, a note that says, "No. Not here, not in Pima County, not now, not last year, this year, or next year. Not here, not now, not ever. No." Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Our next speaker is going to be Frank Landavasso. Thank you for being here, sir. Appreciate it and your patience as well. Please give us your name for the record and you have three minutes to address the board.
Good morning. My name is Frank Landavasso. I was last here on January 14th. I reside in District 2, Councilmember Valdez's district. And at that point in time, I brought to this board's attention the fact that I live in the Wildcat subdivision. And unfortunately, because of that label, due to that label, you all know what that means, we have no representation. Pima County provides no services whatsoever in, to our community. I've lived there 15 years. They have not put one dime into my community. There should be no class, no citizen, no, 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 no one should be discriminated against because of a title. And I think it's time, hopefully, that our concerns could start, begin to get represented and elevated. Perhaps there's some funding, local funding, federal funding, something that can turn this bad label around and, and erase it. It's time we start getting representation. Last time I was here, Councilman Valdez, you asked your assistant Benny to take my name and number. I have yet to hear it from you. I don't know if that's a good thing or a bad thing, but perhaps, maybe we could talk about this and see if we could start getting some resolution for our community. Thanks for your time.
Thank you, sir. All right. Our next speaker is going to be Juan Padres. Thank you for being here, sir. You have three minutes to address the board. Please give us your name for the record.
Good morning. My name is Juan Padres, and I am currently running for County Supervisor in District 3 as a Democrat. My comments today are in reference to Stone Garden. So I was reading this page on the Agenda for Contracts, Awards, and Grants. And it says the program goals, predicted outcomes are increased capability to prevent, protect against, and respond to border security issues, amongst other things. And then the public benefit, it says, enhance security of United States borders along routes of ingress from international borders to include travel corridors in Pima County. Well, as far as I know, those are all federal issues. And, you know, having peace officers, our sheriff's deputies, enforce that is completely out of the scope of work. This board has said it, I've heard especially the Republicans say, you know, when the board made a resolution against the wall that it, Pima County is not in the business of, you know, doing that type of resolution against the wall, it's not in the scope of work of Pima County. On the Paris Accord Agreement, when there was a resolution saying that, supporting for the U.S. to stay there, that, oh, it's, it's not the, the county's, it's not in, in their scope of work. So protecting a federal border is also not in the scope of work of municipal, or in this case, county, peace officers. It's, it's just not there. I think it's, it's a, it's a contradiction in an instance. So I've, I've heard it multiple times, say, you know, early childhood education, well, that's the state's responsibility, is not the county's responsibility. Again, the, the patrolling and enforcing federal law is not a county responsibility. You know, this opens the door for a lot of things. If, if there were to be a grant from the IRS to have deputies enforce tax laws, you know, you could stop, pull you over for a broken taillight and say, oh, have you, we have reason to suspect that you have a, have not filed your taxes. You know, would that be acceptable? Let me see your tax return. Oh, it says you have six dependents? I highly doubt it. Or have a, a, a deputy pull you over for, for a broken taillight and say, you know, ma'am, this, you're driving a 1996 Civic and you have a Louis Vuitton purse. Let me see if it's made in China or in France. Oh, it's made in China. Let me confiscate that because you are violating copyright laws. Let me call Customs and Border Protection. So, no, these are, these are federal issues that are not for our peace officers to enforce. And the other argument that they say, you know, you, we need the money. You know, I see, I, I live in, in central Tucson, you know, I see a ton of Tahos pulling over regular drivers, get hybrids.
Can you get your comments quick?
Yeah. I was gonna say, why, why spend that much money on, on Tahos when you can get hybrids to pull over traffic stops? So, you know, there's ways to save. Those are my comments. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate you being here. Our next speaker is going to be Isabel Garcia. Isabel, thank you for being here. You have three minutes to address the Board of Supervisors. Please give us your name for the record, please.
Yes, Isabel Garcia, and I live in your district. And good morning. As you know, I'm here to, to talk about Operation Stone Garden. And I do want to talk about responsibility. I think it was Mr. Christie who indicated in an op-ed that it wasn't our responsibility to take care of immigrants. But somehow, it is our responsibility on this border to be saturated by Department of Homeland Security Border Patrol Agents, ICE Agents, and now our several hundred deputies to be added to the over 4,000 Border Patrol Agents that exist right this met in the Tucson sector alone. You know, we hear about public safety, but where is the concern, sir, for public safety when we have, again, painted and found 3,643 bodies? The counties involved in this, those are found remains. Where is the uproar about that? We didn't have Bad Ombras doing this. We didn't have drug cartels doing a shootout. We didn't have a cancer cluster somehow come out. It was our policies. And somehow, we don't want to be responsible. We're a battered community. I thank the PDI for having submitted a response to you because this community is battered. From trying to support immigrants who are facing deportation, to people who are now facing public charge issues, to people facing bans, to people facing more limitations on immigration, to people facing prosecution across the street. We are battered. We are battered. And we need to exhibit some kind of radical hospitality versus radical militarization that is a lot more costly. I am representing six generations, sir, whoever said I just got here. And we represent six generations too. I too have a voice. And you should join the Tucson City, who determined that this is contrary to who we are and what we do. And we will be here over and over again. Yes, we're not in the masses that were we years ago, but we're battered. But we're there. We're there on every single front that we can because we're being battered on every single front. And it's our local communities and local residents that feel the impact. Yes, we feel the impact. And as community members, we're saying, we need to help. We need to help our neighbors. They are our family, they're our neighbors. And racialized policing is not the way to get any dollars. If you need any dollars, make your case here for why you need it, not on our backs. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Isabel. Our next speaker is going to be Laura Rothman? Is it Lance? I'm sorry. Yeah. I'm sorry, I couldn't read it. I apologize. I know you've been here many times, so you know the routine. But your name for the record and three minutes to address the board.
Okay. Lena Rothman.
I'm sorry.
I'm from your district, Sharon Bronson. You actually helped me once, and I really appreciated that. I never got to thank you in person, I'm gonna do that now. But I'm also gonna ask you to do something that I believe that you should do as a decent human being, and the rest of you as well. So I'm speaking on behalf of Tucson Surge, which is showing up for racial justice. We work to call white people into anti-racist work while receiving leadership from Black, Brown, and Indigenous people. I am here today in support of ending Stone Garding funding in Pima County. Stone Garding funding sets up collusion between local law enforcement and federal immigration authorities and is damaging to community relationships. It encourages further overpolicing of communities that are already overpoliced and increases the isolation of migrants.
Excuse me, I'm sorry. Could we please, you know, keep it in control out there in the audience? I don't know what that was, somebody's cellphone or something, but this is the second time this has happened. I apologize profusely to you, and I interrupted you. I'll give you a little time to catch up.
Oh, yeah. For sure. It increases the isolation of migrants who are part of our local community, yet are living in fear of federal authorities and their influence on local authorities. I have this, you know, statement written out, but as I sat here this morning, I really decided that I wanted to talk from an emotional standpoint. And this is too rhetorical and educational, and I think I'd rather speak from the heart and ask you to consider that yourselves. I am, Steve, I beat you by a year. I'm 71 years old. I am a retired practitioner of Chinese medicine and acupuncture for the past 32 years. My personal belief for all human beings is to do no harm. If you rarely believe in your prayers of this morning, you all stood up, you bowed, bowed your head, and yet, your policy and what you stand for, it makes me question how real your prayers are. And I don't say that as a guilt trip, but I am asking you to look in the mirror when you're alone and, and ask yourself, what, what are you doing? How far are you from, you know, being a child where you had an open heart? Is that what this country does to us? Yeah, I'm, I'm about finished. And I usually do take this kind of stance. I can't help it, that's who I am. And I'm asking you to get in touch with your humanity and to vote for a humane policy that doesn't criminalize people that are trying to just survive because of the policies that the U.S. has put into place in Central American countries. It is our fault, it is our responsibility. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rothman. Our next speaker is going to be Eduardo Quintana. Mr. Quintana, thank you for being here. Appreciate your time. Please give us your name for the record and you have three minutes to address the Board of Supervisors.
Thank you, Mr. Elias. I live in your district. Thank you very much for your vote on Proposition 205. It was the right thing to do. You didn't buckle to the fear, you didn't buckle to the threats, you didn't accept the bribes that our mayor and city council, in my opinion, did. Maybe one or the other, maybe both. I was born in Durango. I was born in Durango, 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 Mexico. And my family has for decades been from both sides of the border. My mother was born in San Antonio. I, like a lot of other Mexicans, had an uncle or a great uncle that fought with Pancho Villa. I also had a great-great-great-grandfather that fought the U.S. invasion of Mexico that resulted in the border that controversy is going on now. We were there long before the border was there. We've been here for more than 200 years. It's a big land we live on, and I've driven all across this country, and I see vast expanses of clean water and forests, from sea to shining sea, lots of land, and there's room for everyone. This country's a rich country. We have the resources to take care of many, many, many people. But unfortunately, the inequality that we see prevents that from happening. Climate change is rapidly advancing upon us. It's gonna create hundreds of thousands, actually millions, more refugees, people fleeing because they can't grow crops, because there's warlordism starting to entrench itself in places where law breaks down and chaos sets in. This is happening on the border. There's people fleeing. The interventions that the U.S. created in Central America during the 1980s and the interventions that the U.S. is creating now in Venezuela, starving, 40,000 people have been starved, many of them children. In Cuba, we've been torturing that country for decades for wanting to be independent. Nicaragua, we destroyed that country in the 80s. El Salvador, Guatemala, we funded the massacre of over a million people, Indigenous people in Guatemala. I work with refugees now, and I see, it's mostly young women and even carrying even younger babies. And they huddle against the border wall that Trump once built in O'Gallus, and they wait three months. Three months of extortion, of kidnapping, of rape, and brutality, waiting for a pass to get in and tell their story. And maybe 1% will be allowed to stay when U.S. law and international law says that they should all have a right to, running out of time, okay. So, anyway, we're rapidly descending into barbarism. So, we have that choice, barbarism or human solidarity. You know, which is it gonna be? We've gotta stop collaborating with this barbaric regime that's descending into a very dark place.
Our next speaker is gonna be Marian Chubon. Marian, please, thank you for being here. You have three minutes to address the Board of Supervisors. Please give us your name for the record.
Thank you. My name is Marian Chubon, and I live in District Four. I also want to thank you, Chairman Elias, for voting for Proposition 205. Like many of us who live in Tucson, who have begun taking a look at these policies that are, that you, that's before you today, accepting bribe money to enforce federal immigration law. So, I am absolutely against Stone Garden. We've been here before, we've been here for years, and tens and dozens of hours talking about why this is wrong, it's wrong morally, it doesn't make sense. From a community safety standpoint, families are being traumatized, and we're becoming normalized to this idea. So, Supervisor Bronson, I sent you last night a piece that I wrote about the agency that we're considering collaborating with. So, the Department of Homeland Security is an agency that is riddled with human rights abuses. I wrote a piece that's 14 pages long. So, in case you feel like you're kind of normalizing this idea of who this agency is and it isn't so bad, and we need to, we need to keep our community safe, we are talking about 14 pages of human rights abuses, rapes, murders, families being ripped apart, children in cages. This is the reality of that agency that we're talking about. This isn't hyperbole. This is happening in our community. Some of us have witnessed it. So, you know, I'm sorry, I'm really exasperated. I can't believe we're having this conversation still. I really can't believe we're having this conversation. So, this idea of public safety, we know communities are safer if our undocumented community members feel comfortable to speak to police. We know this, it's been proven. Why are we talking about public safety? We don't need this money. One thing that occurs to me, and I think it was briefly mentioned, is this idea that, you know, that we need this money to provide whatever we need to provide for this community. But we have, we're not getting creative about how to, how to make our community safer. We keep accepting this blood money. It is blood money, and we keep accepting it, and so, it lets us off the hook from having to come up with really creative solutions on how to have our community work for everybody, and it's intolerable. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is gonna be Brett Daniels? Daniels? Yep. Thank you very much for being here. I appreciate your time and your patience. I know it's been a long morning already, but give us your name for the record, and you'll have three minutes to address the Board of Supervisors.
Wonderful, thank you. Good morning. My name is Brett Daniels. I'm a member of the community, a member of the Green Party of Tucson, as well as a member of the People's Defense Initiative. I thank you, Supervisor Elias, for, again, voting yes on Prop 205. First off, I'd like to recognize that we are on Indigenous land of the Tohono Oa'utu Nation. I, along with my friends and comrades here, urge y'all to vote no on Operation Stone Garden and the funds going towards that. Operation Stone Garden requires local law enforcement to collaborate with federal immigration enforcement. There's no data that indicates that the Pima County Sheriff's Department, using Stone Garden funds, accomplish any of its intended goals. All Operation Stone Garden activities are overseen by U.S. Customs and Border Protection, which is the largest federal law enforcement agency of the DHS. Each of these organizations, we know, like it's been mentioned, are attached to human rights abuses. The funds for Operation Stone Garden do not support humanitarian aid and human rights, migrant rights. And so, I, like my friends, comrades, and community members advocating for those rights, have, like we've emphasized, which side of history do y'all stand on? Please vote no on Operation Stone Garden funds.
Thank you, Brett. Appreciate your time. Our next and final speaker to call to the audience is Jenny Simner. Ms. Simner, thank you for being here. Appreciate your patience. You're always a patient one, so I appreciate that. And please give us your name for the record, and you have three minutes to address this Board of Supervisors.
Thank you all for being here today. There's a lot that I could say about Operation Stone Garden, but instead, I'm gonna read some excerpts from an op-ed that expresses these concerns better than I can, and I have copies if anyone needs it later. This op-ed begins, "Many things have led me to question the wisdom of accepting these funds." In a piece titled, "Don't Saddle Our Deputies With Stone Garden Baggage," it goes on to enumerate several reasons for rejecting Stone Garden, including the following. First, when our sheriff's deputies collaborate with Border Patrol, it often has a chilling effect on our safety. A recent study found that more than 40% of Latinos are less likely to contact the police if they are victims of a crime because state and local law enforcement are increasingly involved in enforcing immigration law. Next, Stone Garden hurts not just people of color, but also people who live in our rural communities. Deputies working under Stone Garden aren't allowed to answer calls for local service or patrol their local neighborhoods. Most basic aspects of protecting community safety are prohibited by the Stone Garden grant. Also, there is no clear and compelling data that Stone Garden makes us safer, but there is evidence that when local law enforcement collaborates with Border Patrol, communities feel less safe. Stone Garden severely lacks accountability. There is little state or local oversight into how its funds are spent. There are no performance measures for the program, and it does not compensate Pima County taxpayers for the costs involved. Then, the sheriff's position is that participate, not participating in Stone Garden will cede control and application of immigration law to federal authorities, diminishing local perspectives that may be more nuanced. Why are there nuances in the fair and just application of law? Finally, Border Protection and Customs Enforcement are federal responsibilities, period. The feds should do their job and let local law enforcement do theirs. These powerful words were published by Supervisor Bronson in the Arizona Daily Star a little more than a year ago, and nothing has changed during that year. Stone Garden still forces our county sheriffs to enforce federal law. Accountability and transparency remain huge issues, as does the high cost to Pima County taxpayers. And most of all, Stone Garden makes Pima County residents feel less safe, and it erodes the community trust in law enforcement. So, I'm not here just to pick on Supervisor Bronson, but to urge all of our supervisors to take her powerful words seriously and to say no, once and for all, to the Stone Garden grant. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I do have one more card that was submitted. They do not wish to speak, but they are offering comments in opposition to Stone Garden. And that was from Miranda Trimanir. I believe I said that right. I don't know if I did, but I'm sorry. We're gonna take a short five-minute break, and we'll be back, and we'll go directly to the Stone Garden item on return. I'd like to call to order the -- call back to order the February 4, 2020 meeting of the Pima County Board of Supervisors. We have several items regarding Stone Garden on our agenda. One of them was placed on there by Supervisor Christie from District 4. I'm going to ask Mr. Christie if it's okay we take these items all together. They are Items 11, 15, and 16.
That's fine. Yes.
Thank you. Appreciate that. A lot of very good discussion.
Mr. Chairman.
Supervisor Miller, excuse me. I was going to make a comment, but go ahead.
You said Items 11, 15, and 16. Are we going to address Item 14 at the same time, or are we going to do this separately?
We can address Item 14 at the same time, too. That's fine.
Okay. Thank you.
I apologize to everybody. I did make that error. So I appreciate everybody's comments, and I appreciate the respect that everybody was showing in the room. I look forward to a good discussion with the board. Supervisor Bronson.
I'm -- I thought we were dealing with Supervisor Christie's first.
We're going to deal with all of these together.
Okay.
If you want to go ahead and comment, Mr. Christie, go ahead, please.
Just from a procedural standpoint, so everybody's on the same page, I'd like to ask Mr. Flag for clarification on this particular item as outlined in the numerical sequence by the chairman. Is a formal motion required to allow for discussion, or can discussion be allowed followed by a formal motion?
Mr. Chairman, Supervisor Christie, under the parliamentary procedure rules, typically a motion and a second are required before debate occurs on the motion. That's not a requirement of state law. That's a parliamentary procedure question that I think the chairman would decide.
Mr. Chairman.
And I think the council's comments are correct. If we're going to have discussion on a specific motion, then we need to have a motion on the floor if we want to have discussion about the item in general. That's perfectly permissible prior to making a motion.
So based on those two conveyances from Mr. Flag and from the chairman, I would like to make a motion to accept the 2018 Stone Garden Grants as stated in Agenda Items 15 and 16, and then added 11 and 12. Is that correct, the numbers?
No.
15 and --
14, 15, 16, and Item 11. I think that it would be best if we made individual motions on each one of these items, but we can have this discussion as we move on.
In my motion, I was just addressing 15 and 16, so I'll keep that in the motion to accept the 2018 Stone Garden Grants as stated in Agenda Items 15 and 16, with the accompanying terms and conditions as outlined and highlighted in Sheriff Napier's memorandum dated December 17, 2019, and the county administrator's memorandum dated January 16, 2020.
Thank you very much. Is there a second?
I'll second it for sake of discussion.
We have a motion and a second to approve Items 14 -- I mean, Items 15 and 16.
Mr. Chairman.
And ultimately, Item 11 as well. Supervisor Christie.
It's sometimes interesting that we -- between the speakers and the board members, we do get some sort of agreement. I, too, have felt the agreement about -- with some of the speakers in their summary of why are we having this discussion? Why are we back here again debating this? And I concur with that, but I think probably from a different perspective. I don't think it has been advisable or proper that we've had this discussion this long. This grant -- these grants should have been accepted by this board a number of months ago. One of the things that we did in our office is just to look at the fact that these same very similar Stone Garden Grants have been automatically put on the consent agenda and accepted by this board for some 12 years. Yet, in the last two years, we've been debating whether or not to accept them. And we just did a little math to figure out the time and energy that the county employees have spent on memorandum regarding the Stone Garden Grants and CLEPSI and the amount of taxpayer money that has been devoted to these memorandum and research, everywhere from the county administrator to other board members and to members of the public. We have roughly close to 50, just under 50 memorandum since we've been discussing this. That is a huge amount of taxpayer time, money, and energy. So based on the fact that the sheriff has been working diligently, I believe, to find ways to make this grant as acceptable and as appropriate as he possibly can, he has worked diligently with community members, trying to gather input and information that can explain the necessity of accepting these grants. And he has worked tirelessly with the county board to try to reach some kind of accommodation where this grant can be accepted and would be accepted from Washington. And I think he's done that in his December 17, 2019 memorandum. And, Mr. Chairman, I would like to have Sheriff Napier address this board and make comments regarding his memorandum and the county administrator's accompanying memorandum of January 16.
Very well. Sheriff Napier.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I appreciate the opportunity to speak with you this morning in support of the Operation Stone Garden Grant. As Supervisor Christie points out, I believe the sheriff's department has been very diligent trying to answer community concerns and work cooperatively with the county administrator and members of the board to try to find a path forward that would address community concerns, fiscal concerns, and provide us a path forward that is a compromise path forward, because compromise is clearly necessary. And I embrace that compromise. We've talked about humanitarian aid, and I've been very clear in my vocal support that the federal government needs to provide to Pima County humanitarian aid to deal with the humanitarian crisis that was created by immigration policies that we have to deal with. We have to provide a standard of care to people in our community, and it is right and proper that we have requested federal aid to help us with humanitarian aid. Unfortunately, that aid was denied under Operation Stone Garden funding. Operation Stone Garden is an operational grant. And while permissible and allowable under IB 436, which is a FEMA directive, to reallocate some of that Stone Garden funding toward humanitarian aid, it was kind of circumnavigated by House Bill 3401, which is specifically earmarked and funded to provide humanitarian aids to communities just like Pima County that are facing a humanitarian crisis. That bill was originally funded with $30 million. The first round of grants came from that, and I understand that there's at least $20 million still there up for the grab. And I would very much support Pima County pursuing those funds through a more appropriate venue, which is House Bill 3401. We have worked diligently to find a way to kind of wean ourselves from Stone Garden dependency. I have a very affirmative responsibility, as your county sheriff, to provide public safety in our county. To deny that there are transnational crime threats that come up from our border in the form of drug and human trafficking is simply to be intellectually dishonest. We are still interdicting records amounts of fentanyl, opiates, heroin, and methamphetamine. And we know that a large portion of this is coming up through the border. When I was a young police officer, if somebody interdicted two ounces of methamphetamine, that was considered a big deal. That was a big bust. People would slap you on the back and say, "That was really good. You took some drugs off the street." We're now at 50 pounds, 90 pounds, 13,000 fentanyl pills in one seizure. I have to have the tools in my toolbox to be able to address these transnational crime threats while still being sympathetic, as I am to the activist community, who rightly have some concerns about federal entanglement with immigration laws. But the salient point here is that my deputies do not have the authority, nor will they on my watch, to actively enforce federal immigration law. That would make us a 287G department, which I've been very vocal that I think that is an entanglement we do not need. Nonetheless, Stone Garden provides me additional assets to put our deputies -- let me underline that -- our deputies out in the rural areas of Pima County. Yes, we're in support of a federal mission out there, but we're also providing public safety services that are fundamentally necessary to keep Pima County safer. And I would argue that a lot of the drugs that we're interdicting are not residing in Pima County. The 13,000 fentanyl pills that we took off the street were not going to be consumed in Pima County. Those were going to result in overdoses in Indiana, Ohio, Michigan, New York, because these drugs are -- we're simply a conduit. I have to have the tools in my toolbox to address the very real humanitarian threat of human trafficking. Migrants are being victimized criminally, financially, and sexually as they come up through the border. We have to have the tools in our toolbox. I have to have the resources to do that. Our plan starts to divest us from dependency on federal funds through Stone Garden by realizing that we have an operational asset, meaning the Robles Junction Station, that I need funding to outfit. But the problem with that is I don't have the bodies. I don't have the funding currently. If this board awarded me the funding right now, it would take me about a year to get up and running out there. So I see Stone Garden funding and acceptance of this granted and the terms offered by the county administrator and collaborated with me as a bridge to get us to the point where we could, to some degree, separate ourselves from dependency on federal funding, which we have depended upon for more than a decade. This body affirmed multiple times that it saw the public safety benefit of this grant because you accepted it. You accepted it on the consent agenda. There are collateral costs associated with our acceptance of this grant. I would not deny that. I'm being countered by nature. I'm a frustrated accountant, I think, sometimes. There are collateral costs associated with our acceptance of this grant. I recognize that. Our plan does a lot to meter that, to ameliorate some of those fiscal concerns in a responsible way that still allows me the public safety tools that I need to address these transnational crime threats while addressing the fiscal concerns. But my friends, the thing that we do not know, and we cannot know, is what is the cost of not doing this? What is the cost of not interdicting 13,000 fentanyl pills? What is the cost of not interdicting 90 pounds of methamphetamine? What is the cost of not rescuing a migrant in distress in the desert? What is the cost, as somebody pointed out, about all the bodies that we're recovering in the deserts of Pima County? As a father, a grandfather, and a humanitarian Christian, it pains me every time that I read in our daily force commander summary that my deputies once again have recovered human remains. Now, this may seem like an archaeological dig or something you might see in National Geographic. When I see the pictures of these bones, I see somebody's father. I see somebody's son. I see somebody's brother. I see a family in El Salvador or Guatemala or Honduras that will never know what happened to their family. This is a humanitarian crisis. It is a humanitarian crisis. And we need to be real about that. I need the resources necessary to address this very real threat that we face here in Pima County. So I either need these resources with Stone Garden funding, or this body needs to provide me additional resources so I can do the things that the voters of Pima County have entrusted me to do. And I believe very strongly that the suggestion that the adoption of Stone Garden funding will somehow turn the very brave and dedicated men and women of the Pima County Sheriff's Department into racist people, I reject that summarily. I've been in law enforcement since 1981. The people of Pima County, the Pima County deputies, the personnel that I work with on the Pima County Sheriff's Department are some of the finest people I have ever had the honor to work with. To suggest that the taking of overtime money so that I can deploy these resources into the rural areas of our county would somehow equate to them becoming rabid racists is offensive. These are the people -- these are our neighbors. These aren't people that have been shipped in from somewhere else. They're our friends, they're our neighbors. They're our daughter softball coach. These are our people. And to suggest that they would become racist simply by the adoption of overtime funds under Operation Stone Garden should offend us all. I'm offended, being the leader of that organization that I have so much confidence in and so much pride in. So I ask you to give us the bridge, approve Stone Garden as conceptualized and supported by the county administrator and several on this board, and trust the Pima County deputy sheriffs to operate within their lane so that we can have this money to build a bridge to that point at which we can less entangle ourselves with federal funds and upfit the Robles Junction District Station with personnel and resources so that I may better police autonomous from federal entanglements the transnational crime threats that we face out there, provide better service to Saseby, Aravaca, and the west parts of our county that are largely underserved simply because I don't have the resources. I'm policing an area of 9,000 square miles with about 400 deputies. I don't have free bodies. My deputies are running their tails off night after night after night, and we're struggling to simply staff this department to provide basic needs for this county because of the job market and other factors. It's just really hard for me to recruit now. I need your help. The community needs your help. Public safety needs your help. We can operate within our lane. We are responsive to the needs of the community. We have a racial profiling policy now. We had none under any prior sheriff. We have a policy that specifically prohibits my deputies from staging themselves at Border Patrol checkpoints. We have a specific policy that prohibits deputies from asking about the immigration status of people who are victims of crime unless immigration status is an element of that crime. We have moved forward and been responsive to the community concerns. You are right 100%. The DARs that are part of the Operation Stone Garden tracking of data are wholly inadequate. When the community brought this to our attention, we investigated it. We now have a better data capture system than we ever had, so we can report back and be more transparent to the community. We are being responsive to these needs. I simply need the resources necessary to carry out my mandate to keep us safer. And that isn't about having disparate impact to brown people. That is not in my heart. It's not in what I want to be a part of or any such thing. But we have undeniable transnational crime threats that require a public safety response. I simply need the resources to be able to do those things. So ask this body to have faith in your Pima County deputies, as I do, that they can operate within their lane, they can operate in an honorable and constitutional fashion, that we will continue to listen to the community as we have. That's not me standing up here and saying that. That's documentable facts that we have been responsive. I'm confident that Sheriff's Department has done everything it can do to move this forward. And I implore upon this body to provide us this bridge of funding so that we can move forward. I think it is the right thing to do, and if I were not convinced that it was the right thing to do for my home, which is Pima County, I would not advise this body to adopt this. I'm committed to this because I believe in my heart, and as a law enforcement practitioner for more than 33 decades, this is the right thing to do. And I very much, Chairman Elias and all, I very much appreciate the opportunity to speak to you. I appreciate the sentiments of people who might disagree with me. Civil discourse is a very important element, and it is a two-way street. Thank you very much for allowing me to speak.
Mr. Chairman.
Supervisor Miller.
I have some questions for Sheriff Napier. I sent you, not once but twice, a request for some information regarding the memorandum of December 17. I asked you about -- you want to add -- one of the proposals in here is to add 13 new personnel at a cost of $4 million is what you're estimating. And you have in your memo that the cost is 2.4 million because you're assuming you're going to get a grant from the federal government for straight time. This is from the December 19 memorandum. This is from the December nineteenth memo—or December seventeenth, two thousand nineteen memorandum that you sent. And my question to you, isn't that considered—and if there's someone here that's an expert in grants—supplanting? And I sent that to both you and Mr. Huckleberry twice, and I never got a response to that question.
Chairman Elias, Supervisor Miller, thank you for that question. No, it's not—in this case, it would not be supplanting because it's technically allowed under the Operation Stone Garden grant. I'm unaware of any Stone Garden recipient that is, instead of using overtime, augmenting with straight time. I've asked them about this, and they're—honestly, they don't know how that would function, but it is not supplanting under the terms of this grant.
Under the current grant, but if you got a grant for straight time, I believe that would be—a potential consideration would be supplanting because you're actually funding these people, you're hiring them as a result of a grant, which is the very definition of supplanting.
Chairman Elias, Supervisor Miller, actually, in this case, that would be for existing personnel. So it would be funding a portion of that person's salary with straight time. So it wouldn't be supplanting in this case because it's actually allowed under the terms of the grant. So I understand your concern about supplanting, but in this case, it would not apply.
But not on this existing grant. I'm talking about going forward because you're talking about creating a new department and using federal funds to fund it permanently because you said the cost in here would be roughly two-point-four million per year. And the actual cost is four million a year. So you're—you're going to be using federal funding, is what you said in your memo, to fund part of the department. So you're—you're expecting you only need to look for two-point-four million when the budget comes around.
Chairman Elias, Supervisor Miller, your point's well taken. I'm not sure that we could get straight time. It is technically allowable under the terms of the grant. What I would rather do, my personal preference, is to simply provide the Sheriff's Department with the necessary funding so that we can outfit the Robles Junction Station and provide better service to that gap between our Centover District and our Aho District, and thereby provide better service to Saseby, Aravaca, and address those threats that are coming up from that region.
And the other question that I asked in that request was, what are the additional pension costs by adding these thirteen new deputies? And I never got a response to that question either. I—I understand they're under a different tier. It's not going to be as expensive, but what are—we expecting for the additional pension costs?
Chairman Elias, Supervisor Miller, that is—would be hard for me to calculate that. I would have to defer to Mr. Huckleberry on that because a lot would depend on where—what tier those pension liabilities fell in. And without knowing where those personnel come from, I—I couldn't calculate that reasonably because I—I simply don't know whether it'd be Tier Three or Tier One employees. Clearly, the people that we would hire, the additional thirteen bodies, would all be Tier One employees. The reallocated bodies to outfit Robles Junction might come from a blend of those. So it would be kind of a difficult math equation to—to determine.
Well, that was one of the things you referred to in here is that you were going to not use any of the, I guess, Tier One employees. You were going to use the—the Tier Three employees for this, according to your memorandum. So that brings up another question. Is there an issue with discriminating—discriminating against deputies that have been here a long time versus deputies that are new, that you could say you can't do overtime but you can? I—I guess that would be a—a question for the county attorney to address, but I have a lot of questions about this. This proposal and—and the fact that we're now going back to adding—I mean, I look at the cost you talk about. You're going to need new vehicles, four-wheel-drive vehicles. Yeah, we're going to end up at five, six million dollars a year with this new department adding it into the budget. And so I didn't get the analysis that I asked for. I would like that. I will be discussing this at the time of the budget, but I'm not willing to support this today because I didn't get the analysis I asked for. So the addition of this memorandum, the recommendations in here, there's a lot in here. And regarding the humanitarian aid, I spoke to Kirsten Sinema's office last August, and they had just gotten this bill approved with thirty million dollars of additional funding. And I sent the information down to Mr. Huckleberry, and I know you've gotten, what, about a hundred-and-sixty-six thousand to date from that grant? And we've submitted five-hundred-and-seventy-seven thousand more. And what is the status on that? Have we received that?
Mr. Chairman and Supervisor Miller, the status is that the second round invitations to make a proposal have just come out. If you recall, we had a lot of concerns about the initial round, and they held a listening session here in Tucson to hear from concerns, and most of those concerns came out of Maricopa County. We expressed ours, and most of them were the fact that this is a grant that pays in arrears and only pays for a certain period of time, even though the—the law covers an eighteen-month period. We'll submit, based on the—the new proposal, the balance of what's due to the county in March sixteenth—or slightly before that because that's the new deadline. And hopefully, we will have some positive results out of that. We've been assured that we will. But again, you don't get a positive result until you get a grant award. And my guess is that'll come probably in later March of this year, which will—we will be made whole for all of our expenditures up to December thirty-first. And my guess is that they're going to then have a third round of appropriations for the last six months, which then we have to submit for whatever expenses we continue to incur by operating Casa Alitas. So I think the humanitarian aid issue is, I think, fairly well in hand. I would anticipate we'll be fully reimbursed.
Thank you.
Supervisor Bronson.
Ms—thank you, Mr. Chairman. And Sheriff Napier, you spoke about the DARs, the daily activity reports, not being adequate. And you mentioned something about data recapture that you have a farm or you had developed a farm, is that correct, for Stone Garden operations?
Chairman Elias, Supervisor Bronson, that's correct. The DAR only captures that data that the federal government is interested in, and that is how we operated under the expenditure of those grant funds. The community correctly pointed out that that lacks transparency, and it lacks some of the data capture that they—they asked for. So as the sheriff of the county, I can mandate that our employees capture whatever data that we ask them to if they want to be deployed on overtime under this grant. So we developed, in cooperation with those concerns, a much more comprehensive form that will allow us to be more transparent and more responsive to the community's concerns with respect to our activity.
And you could make those available publicly? Should you capture that data?
Chairman Elias, Supervisor Bronson, absolutely, that would be our intent, to report back to the board on a monthly basis, much in the same way that we're now reporting every time that we contact Border Patrol, which we previously did not do. And the public was right that they didn't have any perspective on how many times our department was contacting Border Patrol. And once we started capturing the data, we were—we were pleased to find out that eighty-five percent of the time that we do contact Border Patrol, it's at the bequest of a migrant who's lost in—in distress. We've been working very cooperatively with no more deaths to redefine our protocols so that when we get these calls, how can we better respond? How can we better leverage the assets in the operational area, that being Borstar and our search and rescue folks, to make sure that when somebody calls in distress that we can more effectively respond? So we're prepared to capture more data, and—but we have to be allowed to move forward.
Thank you. Okay. I—I would also comment that—and you can have a seat.
Thank you very much.
Sheriff Napier, thank you. Appreciate your time. This is not—the criticisms that have been leveled about Operation Stone Garden in its relation to fear in the community and that it leads to some profiling that takes place. And I think that that was very articulate, the way Dr. O'Leary brought that out in the discussion this morning. This is not an attack on our officers and saying that they're racist. That's absurd. You know, the—the truth is, is that our policy as a nation is one that's extremely problematic and has not been fixed within an entire generation of people who live here in the borderlands. An entire generation has lived under the yoke of this oppression that has ultimately come about because of our unwillingness to deal with immigration issues and resolve the problem. An entire generation. Ms. Garcia talked about six generations here. My family, about the same. And I think about the generation of Elias's that have lived with this. And it pains me. But it's not about attacking our officers and saying that they're inherently racist. That's unfair. That's an unfair attack on community ultimately. Nothing has changed about the eighteen grant, and that's the motion that we have in front of us right now. I—I think it remains problematic. I think it continues to have a—a lack of—of transparency surrounding the true cost behind it, six-for-one in pension costs, the lack of willingness to pay indirect services, indirect costs, the lack of—of humanitarian aid that's involved in this. Sheriff Napier always told us, "Well, if I'm not at the table, then we're on the menu." Well, apparently, we were at the table and we ate ourselves. That's—that's what took place. And it's—and it's sad. And it's sad, and—and it's indicative of the fact that ultimately, right now—and it has been this way for a while, DHS is a rogue agency that really doesn't serve the interests of everybody in this country, certainly not of all the citizens. So, you know, I—I'm very opposed to the motion. I just wanted to make those comments. And Sheriff Napier, also in his discussion about this motion, spoke about transparency and the fact that we've worked hard to be transparent. I—I think that's true, but the elimination of Klepsy was a very bad indication towards all of us. And replacing it with a committee that meets in private, where we don't know what the discussion is, where we don't know what the agenda is—we have an idea of who the members are, but that's not transparency. And that's not what our community needs to ultimately be able to deal with the—the dire consequences of the fear that's created in our community when we collaborate unnecessarily with the Border Patrol and 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 CPP. So.
Mr. Chairman.
Supervisor Bronson, please.
I heard a lot of rhetoric today doesn't match the reality I see on the ground in District Three. Accepting—and the motion as currently framed, I do not find acceptable. Accepting the federal government's Operation Stone Garden grant, and it's a FEMA grant, it's not a—it's not a Customs and Border Patrol grant, may I remind everybody, is a—is a difficult policy decision. We've accepted it over time, but more recently, the vigorous public debate in opposition to the grant, it's clear that the grant hasn't changed nor adapted to today's border conditions. But there is one compelling policy reason to accept OPSG, oh, the Stone Garden funds, and that is a new federal policy, the Migrant Protection Plan. In the last few years, we have seen increasing peaceful surrenders at the border for individuals seeking asylum in the U.S. Those individuals were treated humanely and afforded legal counsel, legal counsel, bedrock principles of our county and our country. But now with the more Migrant Protection Plan, things have changed. I believe that this plan will do nothing more than cause legal asylum seekers to be forced to return to the old dangerous smuggling routes, to be victimized by drug cartels and those who profit from human smuggling. As a direct result of MPP, dangerous human smuggling trafficking will emerge as a primary method of entry into the United States by those seeking asylum. History tells us the outcome of this activity means more deaths in the—in the desert. Between two thousand ten and two thousand nineteen, the remains of undocumented border crossing crossers were recovered solely in District Three, the district I represent. These are foreign nationals who have died attempting to cross the southern desert from Saseby on the Mexican border to the Ironwood National Forest on northern Pima County border and through Aho and Lukeville on the western border. May I remind my colleagues that all of the individuals who died attempting to cross the desert in southern Arizona perished in District Three, not in District One, not in District Two, not in District Four, and not in District Five. The implementation of MPP now makes it even more imperative that more law enforcement is present in the western deserts of Pima County, not only for the interdiction of human and drug smuggling, but more importantly, for the rescue and the provision of life-saving aid. I assume my two Republicans—I—I think I'm incorrect, given Supervisor Miller's comments recently, would accept OPSG funding without any conditions, but I will not. In fact, I believe the conditions recommended by the county administrator fall short of ensuring the civil liberties of our citizens are fully protected if our law enforcement officials work in conjunction with federal agencies on border protection. In addition, it is clear—which is why I appreciate Sheriff Napier's commitment to the data recapture reports, the monthly data recapture reports. In addition, it is clear by past analysis that accepting Stone Garden funding as is does not fully reimburse local taxpayers. That was my original concern with accepting Stone Garden funds, and that came as a result of actually reading the November ninth, two thousand seventeen OIG report regarding FEMA and CPP oversight of Operation Stone Garden and their recommendations that it needs I support the conditions certainly recommended by the county administrator in his recent memo and would like to add, as a—as an amendment, should the maker of the motion accept it, some more conditions. First, only the federal government can discuss a two thousand eighteen grant in two thousand twenty. That's interesting. It is clear if this grant is accepted, all utilization—this is a two thousand and eighteen grant—must end June thirtieth, two thousand twenty, and that confines those expenditures to our normal fiscal year. Second, I believe condition H, which is that the county receive indirect expense reimbursement from any OPSG grant to the maximum extent possible. I believe that that needs to be condition B. We received it from Department of Justice grants in the past, and it's absurd that we cannot receive such from Homeland Security grants. As a condition, the principle is quite simple. We—unless we are reimbursed to the maximum extent possible for our indirect expenses, there will be no overtime expenses incurred for the sheriff for OPSG. Next, it should be obvious that a grant program started nearly fifteen years ago has not changed, is outdated, and requires federal policy revision. I would ask the board to call upon our congressional delegation to overhaul OPSG. In fact, the only published—the only published report from the Office of the Inspector General calls it non—non-transparent and non-accountable. It's time to overhaul this grant. Federal OPSG policy requires legislative action and revision. Doing so will save federal and local taxpayers money. A simple solution, as well as cost savings for both federal and local taxpayers, is available by simply shifting reimbursement from overtime to straight time hours worked by local police agencies assisting the federal government and border security. Finally, I believe withholding humanitarian aid, when it was suggested by federal department policy guideline documents, coupled with a flimsy excuse for denial, as well as the runaround we've been given on indirect expense reimbursement, calls for an official review and investigation of the agencies involved in OPSG grant funding through the Office of the Inspector General of the Department of Homeland Security. We should ask that department to review the supplement and suppl— We should ask that department to review the supplement and supplement their report of November 9, 2017. And with that, I would like to amend the motion, if the maker is so inclined.
Mr. Chairman, I cannot accept those amendments, particularly the ones quoting the overhaul of the legislative action. That would take years to conduct to a satisfactory level that my colleague Supervisor Bronson is asking for. In the meantime, the opportunity and the window to accept the Stone Garden grants will have closed. You could only ask so many, be asked so many times and then rejected so many times before you're stopped even being asked again. We've tried to massage these grant requests with all sorts of different variables in them, and we have to remember, we're not the ones that are giving the money. This is money coming from agencies designed to protect our border and to secure our people's safety along the border. And if we start doing things in a legislative realm, trying to completely redefine the formation of these grants, the timeframe will take forever, we'll miss the opportunity, and it will be a travesty of public safety if we don't accept these Stone Garden grants today.
Mr. Chairman.
He's already turned it down, so there's no reason for you to comment unless you'd like to.
I have another proposal to amend the motion. In your motion, you included the, all of the sheriff's recommendations in that December 2019 memorandum. I could approve it today, the two grants, the one for the overtime and mileage and the other one for the equipment, if you leave off the inclusion of the rural law enforcement unit, because I did not get answers to my questions.
Mr. Chairman, just as a question, if those questions you're seeking were answered, particularly on the rural law enforcement piece, if they were explained to you in a satisfactory manner that was acceptable to you, would you accept that portion?
Right. I requested this information twice. I have not received it, and I want a detailed analysis of the questions that I asked and if I get that at that point. But today, I can approve the two grants, but I don't want the inclusion of the rural law enforcement unit, which I kind of think that should be discussed in the budget time anyway.
Mr. Chairman, I will accept the amended motion as presented by Supervisor Miller.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman.
Supervisor Bronson.
I will not be supporting this motion. Again, we are not getting full cost reimbursement for our taxpayers. As Supervisor Christie rightly pointed out, the humanitarian aid is a federal responsibility. So is border protection, frankly. And unless we are fully compensated and unless the terms of the grant change substantially as I outlined, I will not be able to support this motion.
Mr. Chairman.
Supervisor Miller.
I have one more question regarding the indirect expenses. Are we pursuing an approved rate from the federal government on indirect?
Mr. Huckleberry.
Mr. Chairman and Supervisor Miller, yes, we are.
Don't we already have one in place, but we are working to amend it? Isn't that more correct?
No, we don't have one.
Mr. Chairman and Supervisor Miller, it is my belief we've had one in the past, but it's so far in the past that no one can remember it or find it.
So we haven't been adhering to it, but we have one in place?
You have, we have had one for large federal appropriations in about 1981 and 82.
Geez. How old were you then, Steve?
We have not had one. We have not had, what, the new vernacular is a quote negotiated internal cost recovery or internal cost, and so it's negotiated.
Yeah.
And that's the new term they're using. It's going to be the same as our internal cost recovery figure we have today, which is 28.48%. But you have to basically jump through their hoops.
Right.
To get them to agree.
I've been through a federal audit for rate packages before, and they will go through and they'll determine that some things are allowable and some aren't. You go through that whole negotiation. What is the timeframe you're expecting?
Mr. Chairman and Supervisor Miller, I've told our grants management staff to basically have it in place by, I hope, this June, beginning of this next fiscal year, so that it can actually be applied for grants that are coming up in the future. And, you know, again, part of our problem is, is we have a lot of federal agencies accepting indirect expense reimbursement de minimis, which means they just take a default 10%. Well, our real cost recovery is 28 point, the number I just said. So between now and then, we will hopefully get a negotiated rate with one agency that can be applied to all agencies and then start recovering 28% from all of our future federal grants.
Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Could I add one more question, please?
Sure.
This is directed to the county administrator as well as the sheriff. With the motion before this board of accepting the 2018 Stone Garden grants, including Supervisor Miller's amendment, is it of your feeling and opinion and sense that this crafting of this request will be much more acceptable as well as obtainable?
Mr. Huckleberry.
Mr. Chairman and Supervisor Christie, I think the key, one of the key issues is indirect expenses, and I don't believe that's included in this motion.
Sheriff Napier. You could stay there and comment. There's a microphone right there. Save you from getting up. Oh, you want to come up? Okay.
It's something hard to hear back there. Could you reframe the question so I can tell you to respond to it?
Basically, is it your feeling and sense that with these two memorandums and amended by Supervisor Miller, that we stand a much better chance of getting these grants accepted?
Yes. Otherwise, I don't see a path forward for us at all. And I will strongly advocate for indirect cost, as I have been at the state and national level. I would say that I think part of the reason House Bill 3401 exists, Chairman Elias, is because we were at the table and we complained about the fact there was not a third rail of funding. And House Bill 3401 was funded with $30 million because sheriffs were back in Washington, D.C., saying we had a crisis that needed federal funding, and that is the appropriate stream to request humanitarian funding, and I think we will be successful in getting it from there.
So there's how many miles of border with Mexico?
About 2,000.
So 30 million, 2,000 miles. Okay, thank you.
I didn't make the funding decision, Mr. Chairman.
Call question.
Mr. Chairman, just one more comment, if I may.
Sure.
I would, I think everybody loses, no matter how this vote goes down today. And what we're seeing at our state legislature, what a bill was introduced, House Bill 2468 yesterday, that basically would take away our board's authority when it comes to public safety grants and would force us as a board to accept any grants coming from the federal government that are related to public safety.
Terrible policy.
That creates significant legal liability for the entire county and without the accountability. But again, I think however this vote comes out today, we all lose. We're going to see, should this, should the grant not be accepted, we will see many more migrant deaths. And I just don't think this is the way to do business.
Mr. Chairman, could I comment on the statement?
Yes, please, sir.
We keep forgetting the obvious here, and we talk about the board having authority over the sheriff. The sheriff is a duly elected official, the chief law enforcement official in the county. He or she is responsible for the public safety of this county and should have sole discretion and authority to approve or not to approve, to accept or not to accept grants that relate directly to public safety. And we keep losing sight of that very important issue. He is a duly elected sheriff, and if this does not fit well with the goals of the community or the desires of the community, there is a place called the ballot box that this can be changed, but not by trying to micromanage his department through this board action.
Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Supervisor Bronson, go ahead, please.
So I didn't realize the sheriff had taxing authority because if we get this...
I didn't know that either. I thought that was our responsibility. You know, okay, so the item that we're considering right now is regarding item 11 on the agenda. So this is about the 18 grant, not items 14, 15, and 16 yet, okay?
No, wait, what are we doing?
Is that all right? So then...
No.
Okay, then let's restate, would you restate the motion, because you made it?
I will restate the motion because I made it.
Very good.
I move to accept the 2018 Stone Garden grants as stated in Agenda Items Number 15 and 16, with the accompanying terms and conditions as outlined and highlighted in Sheriff Napier's memorandum dated December 17, 2019, and the county administrator's memorandum dated January 16, 2020. And I accepted the amendments to that motion as provided by Supervisor Miller.
Okay. So you're including items 15 and 16?
That is correct.
And 14 as well?
No.
No? Okay, 14 is seven. So this is 11, 15, and 16.
Just 15 and 16.
15 and 16 is the meat of it.
Item 11 is where we started at. Is that correct, Supervisor Christie?
That is correct.
So that is a part of your motion as well?
That is part of my motion.
Very good. Okay, roll call.
Supervisor Bronson?
No.
Supervisor Christie?
Yes.
Supervisor Miller?
Yes, with the exclusion of the rural law enforcement unit.
Supervisor Valdez?
No.
Chairman Elias?
No. Motion fails. So we still have item 14 to go here, which is really irrelevant now because we've turned down the 18 grant.
No, it's not irrelevant.
Okay, well then, please explain to me. I missed it. I apologize.
Mr. Chairman, I think we originally thought this was a part of the equipment grant for 2018, and it is, and it is a separate grant.
I'll move that item.
Second.
All right, very good. We have a motion and a second discussion. I failed to get that. I apologize to you all. No discussion? Roll call.
Supervisor Bronson?
Aye.
Supervisor Christie?
Yes.
Supervisor Miller?
Yes.
Supervisor Valdez?
Aye.
Chairman Elias?
No. Motion carries four to one. Okay, very good. It's 11:30 now. Why don't we take another break for a minute? We'll get back and work on the rest of the agenda. Thank you. We'll get back and work on the rest of the agenda. Thank you.
Good afternoon, and I'd like to welcome you back to the February Board 2020 meeting of the Pima County Board of Supervisors. We were in executive session. Thank you everybody for being patient and hanging in there. Counsel, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board. Executive session, item six on the regular agenda involves Raquel Barronow versus Pima County Board of Adjustment District Four et al. It's Pima County Superior Court case number C-20195618. County Attorney's Office requests approval to defend Pima County as discussed in executive session, including taking the position that the Board of Adjustment District Four should be a nominal party to the action.
Move the county attorney's recommendation.
Second. Motion and a second. Discussion. Objections. Hearing none. Motion carries. Counsel, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board. Executive session, item one on the addendum involves CenturyLink Corporation versus Arizona Department of Revenue et al., Arizona Tax Court case number TX-2019001726. This is a centrally assessed case in which Pima County is represented by the Attorney General. Under the terms of a proposed settlement, the Pima County primary property tax reduction would be approximately $90,000. The Attorney General's Office recommends approval of the proposed settlement.
And the- Move the county attorney's recommendation.
Second.
Motion and a second. Discussion. Objections. Hearing none. Motion carries. We're on to Board of Supervisors sitting as other boards. Blood Control District Board, item seven, but we have to hear agenda item number 29-8 prior to considering this item. So let's move to item 29 on page five of the regular agenda. We have a couple cards that have been submitted. This is an appeal of a procurement director's decision. What's the pleasure of the Board? I think we should probably hear from the procurement department first. Does that sound right? Okay, very well.
Chairman Elias, members of the Board. County staff has thoroughly reviewed SmithCo's responses. They have consulted with AROC, and we have provided much detail about the solicitation package to the Board. My recommendation remains to award to SmithCo Enterprise and deny the appeal.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman.
Supervisor Miller.
I have a couple of questions. They had two items that they were stating that were the basis for their appeal. Number one is the fencing amendment. Number two to the bid package had the question and the answer about the fencing. My question to the procurement director is, do you have the signature of the party filing the appeal? I think it's Falcone. Do you have their signature on this document because it wasn't in the materials that you provided? Because they have to sign for these amendments. Is that correct? That was my understanding.
Chairman Elias, Supervisor Miller. Falcone Brothers, they did submit an application that was signed acknowledging the amendments.
They did acknowledge that. That would have been nice if we had that in the background material. So that is a non-issue if they've signed that. I don't know if they're here today. The other question was regarding the licenses of the individual who was awarded the contract. You stated that they could do this because it was temporary work on the project, that it was work that was not permanently affixed. It was going to be temporary and then come out. That was my understanding. I pulled up the Registrar of Contractors definitions of an A5 and an A12 license, and the individual who was awarded the contract has an A5 license, but to do the pipe, they have to have an A12 license. And I saw nothing in there that said under any circumstances that an individual can do the work that is licensed under A12 with any other license because someone said they could do it. I didn't find anything anywhere because that would basically be contracting without a license.
Chairman Elias, Supervisor Miller, if you refer to my memo in Exhibit B, we have an email from AROC stating the A5 license is that this work can be done with the A5 license.
What date of your-- because I have a whole binder here of documentation. Could I get a copy of that, please, to look at? Because I've got a-
It's a memo from Mr. Huckleberry to the Board dated January 23rd.
Could you bring that up here?
Yeah, please bring it up.
And just for additional information, the amendment, the bid package signed by Mr. Falcone is in the board package also.
Okay, I must have missed that because I-
Thank you, Jen.
-could not find that.
God, he's kind of cute.
I see this in the email exchange. How do they determine that we can do this? I just wonder what grounds you could-- he just said, yes, the work you described can be done with the A5 license. And it's from an individual who is the, from the chief of investigations from the Arizona Registrar of Contractors.
Yeah, Mr. Huckleberry, please. Oh, is that your question was full? No?
Yes, Mr. Chairman and Supervisor Miller, if you look down at our staff inquiry, made an inquiry of the Registrar of Contractors, this is 24-inch high-density plastic pipe, and it's a temporary measure. And in the email request of the staff, they said, if a, does a temporary installation of this qualify under the A5 license? And the answer is yes. So the inquiry was stated specifically in the body of the email from our staff, procurement staff, to the registrar. And the registrar said, yes, that's correct.
Okay, and we're constable that this person isn't licensed to do this work, that this email is sufficient to... Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay. I have two cards that have been submitted, one from the appellant, I believe, Gaetano Falcone. Do you want to hear from you first? Do you want to come up and give you three minutes? And then we have another card that was submitted by Brian Smith to speak to this item. We'll hear you next, okay, sir? Very well. Please, Mr.-
Mr. Chair-
Please, please, give us your name for the record.
Yes, Gaetano Falcone, Falcone Brothers and Associates.
Thank you.
Your chair and board members, ladies and gentlemen. I spoke to the ROC at the time of the bid, and they told me, and there is no way that an A5 license be able to even submit a bid because it's against the rules. You have to have a general contracting license in order to submit or sub out any items. And they told me that the procurement called them, and they told them that it was just a temporary fence engrading, which is not true. The bid documents calls for a 24-inch pipe that it requires an A12 license, and it has to be done by a- to be done by either an A license, general, or A12 license. There is no, maybe we'll let you do it, maybe not. The rules are there.
Yeah.
And they tell you, go and look what they, your requirements are under the A5 license, and it states everything. The ROC told me they won't be under violation until they start the job, and then they will stop the job.
Okay.
So I...
And it was prescriptive to a 24-inch pipe, you said?
It's a, in the bid plans, that doesn't say this is a temporary pipe.
Right, right.
It's a bid item for pipe.
Right, it's prescriptive in that way.
Yeah, it's, even the fence, it, even though it says a temporary, it refers you to the standard fencing, which there is in the plans. There is a detail how it's going to be installed. They cannot do that item either. As a matter of fact, if you look all the general contractor that bid this job, the difference in price is from $120,000 to $20,000 from them. But everybody else with a general license bid what the requirements are in the plans and specs. So we're, you know, we just don't want to have people do work with not the proper license. That's all. We've been doing work...
And you checked on that prior to submitting your bid.
Oh, yes.
You called the ROC.
Of course.
That's exactly what you told us.
Yes.
Just double-checking that.
Yeah, and that's it. I mean, that's all.
Thank you, Mr. Falcone.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Okay, Mr. Smith, please come forward. Just state your name for the record, sir.
My name is Bryant Smith. I'm the owner and president of SmithCo. Enterprises, Inc.
Very good. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen of the board, Administrator Huckleberry, for giving me the opportunity to speak today. As a result of SmithCo. submitting the lowest bid for the Ina landfill Phase One project, the Pima County Procurement Department recommended that the contract be awarded to SmithCo. The Pima County Procurement Department has performed its due diligence and determined that SmithCo. has the capability to perform the contract requirements and that SmithCo. has the reliability, integrity, and level sure good faith performance. We're here today because there's been a protest filed against SmithCo. in which states SmithCo. is not a qualified bidder because SmithCo.'s contractor's license does not permit SmithCo. to perform the work required for Phase One of the project. The procurement department contacted the Arizona Register of Contractors, and they have confirmed that SmithCo.'s license does permit SmithCo. to perform all the requirements associated with Phase One of the project. With this information, our respective request that the protest be dismissed, and SmithCo. and Pima County continue to move forward with the contract. SmithCo. has the capability to perform the contract requirements and is ready to proceed with the reliability and integrity we have given every project for the past 30 years.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Any questions for Mr. Smith?
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, what's the pleasure of the board? Do we have any questions? Any further discussion? Supervisor Miller.
Mr. Chairman, I'm still concerned about this license, and that letter was dated that the inquiry, what was the date the inquiry was sent to the registrar of contractors? Was it January 17, I believe?
That is correct.
January 17. When was the contract awarded?
The contract has not been awarded yet. That's why we're here today.
Oh, okay. But when was the proposed award? Because this was, I believe this one was continued. I thought that's what the appeal was about because the contract was...
The notice of recommendation for award was posted December 30.
December 30, and then you inquired later on after they appealed based on this. Did anyone check on this before?
We did do an initial review of the license, and we believed it was correct.
Supervisor Miller. Mr. Huckleberry, want to make a comment to your question, please?
Okay, thank you.
Yes, Mr. Chairman and Supervisor Miller, I think if you read, and again, this inquiry is based on the appeal. In other words, if the appeal was for the purpose they don't have the correct license, then our staff would then inquire of the registrar of contractors, here's the specifics, and does the license apply? And if you looked at our staff, our procurement officer in Design and Construction, he's talking about the pipe. And, you know, basically, I think the key here is that it's similar to the fence, and it says, per the plans and specifications and confirmation from the design engineer, the pipe is not permanently embedded in concrete/riprep, and concrete head walls will not be installed until the final phase. In other words, a future phase, since the elevations may change during the construction and the final closure of the landfills. So that clearly indicates that it's a temporary measure and would qualify under the A5 license.
I guess my concern is the fact that no one checked on this until there was an appeal to get an official answer on it, and that could lead us down a path that we could get ourselves in trouble if we didn't know for sure whether that license would allow this. Thank you.
Chairman Elias, Supervisor Miller. That email chain that finished with what we showed you actually started December 18. So we did make an initial inquiry to AROC starting December 18.
But you didn't get the answer until the... You didn't get the answer until the 17th of January?
We asked several different conditions, and we went back and forth, clarifications, clarifications, the fencing, the piping, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any further questions to the board? What's the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chairman.
Supervisor Miller.
Based on the review here, I'm going to move to deny the appeal.
Second.
Second. I was going to say, yeah. All right, we have a motion and a second.
And close public hearing. Yes, I heard that. Thank you.
You heard her better than I did. Okay. We have a motion and a second to close public hearing and disprove item 29-8. Roll call.
Supervisor Bronson?
Aye.
Supervisor Christie?
Yes.
Supervisor Miller?
Yes.
Supervisor Valdez?
Yes.
Chairman Elias?
Aye. Motion carries unanimously. We're on to item 29B. Move the item.
Second.
Close public hearing.
Second.
Motion and a second to close public hearing and approve item B. Any objections? Hearing none, motion carries. We're on to item seven, unfinished businesses of contract, Pima County Flood Control District. SmithCo. Enterprises Incorporated. Chair, move the item.
Second.
Motion and a second. Discussion, objections, hearing none, motion carries. We're on to Library District Board, item eight, grant application acceptance for the library. American Library Association, so the Library Census Equity Fund Mini Grant. Chair, move the item.
Second.
Motion and a second. Discussion, objections, hearing none, motion carries. We're on to item nine, which is also a grant acceptance, Institute of Museum and Library Services to provide for writers and residents and libraries project. Chair, move the item.
Second.
Motion and a second. Discussion, objections, hearing none, motion carries. We're on to the consent calendar. Is there anybody who would like to divide the question?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to divide the question and move item number four for separate discussion and vote.
Chair, move the remainder of consent.
Second.
Motion and a second for the remainder of consent, so that's excluding item four. Discussion, objections, hearing none, motion carries. We're on to item four. Chair, move the item.
Second.
Motion and a second. Supervisor Miller, please.
Mr. Chairman, I just object to this item for the reasons that I've stated previously.
Mr. Chairman.
This is the remodel of the bowling alley, Golden Pin's bowling alley.
Sure, understood. Supervisor Christie?
Mr. Chairman, I'm objecting for the same reasons as I've objected to this project in the past.
Let's do roll call, just so that we're clear.
Supervisor Bronson?
Aye.
Supervisor Christie?
No.
Supervisor Miller?
No.
Supervisor Valdez?
Aye.
Chairman Elias?
Motion carries, three to two. Okay, we're on to item, item 12, clerk of the board. This is a petition for redemption of property tax exemption waiver.
Move the item.
Second. Motion and a second. Discussion, objections, hearing none, motion carries. Item 13 is unfinished businesses of contract for diligence systems, amended, amendment number one. I'll move the item. A motion and a second. Any objections? Hearing none, motion carries. We're on to item 17, which is a water easement.
Move the item.
Second.
Motion and a second. Discussion, objections, hearing none, motion carries. We're on to hearings, hearings, franchises, licenses, permits, items 18 through 22 are liquor licenses, 23 and 24 are agent change issues, and item 25 through 28 are fireworks permits. Hearing nobody come forward and having no cards submitted, the chair will move all those items and close public hearings.
Second.
Motion and a second. Discussion, objections, hearing none, motion carries. We're on to the addendum now. Item two, clerk of the board, petition for relief of taxes. Chair, move the item.
Second.
Motion and a second. Discussion, objections, hearing none, motion carries. Item three, attractions and tourism.
Move the item.
Second. Motion and a second. Discussion, objections, and hearing none, motion carries. We're on to item four, Goodwill Industries of Southern Arizona to provide for workforce development services. Chair, move the item.
Second.
Motion and a second. Discussion, objections, hearing none, motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, if, nobody wishes to divide the question on the remaining items four through 15. I will move those items. Do you have a...
Second.
Okay, why don't you want to pull? Wait, she wants to pull one. Five?
Why don't you amend your motion to include everything but item five?
I so amend. Five and 10.
Five and 10.
Okay, so, yeah, I'll amend my motion to exclude five and 10.
To exclude five and 10.
Right.
Very good. We have a motion on the floor to approve the remainder of consent, I mean, the remainder of the addendum excluding items five and 10. Discussion, objections, hearing none, motion carries. We're on to item five. Chair, move the item.
Second.
Motion and a second. Supervisor Miller.
For reasons stated previously on the Southern New Hampshire University lease, I am going to object to this item.
Very good. Any other objections? Motion carries four to one. Item 10.
Move the item.
Motion and a second, because I'm the second. Discussion. Supervisor Miller?
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to object to this one for the same reason I objected to the other one.
Very good.
Mr. Chairman, I'll be objecting as well for the same reason.
Roll call.
Supervisor Bronson?
Aye.
Supervisor Christie?
No.
Supervisor Miller?
No.
Supervisor Valdez?
Aye.
Chairman Elias?
Aye. That concludes the business we have on today's agenda and addendum. Hearing no objections, this meeting stands adjourned.